...nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. All right. Chairman Walker is not here, so I see no chairman's report from him. I signed the VR 18-06 payroll. Now into new business. Bradley Latham from the Latham Law Offices. Reading, Mass. Regating 15, 17, Coleman Room.
My name is Brad Latham, as was indicating...
So that was you in the parking lot?
Just indicating, first of all...
Makes a world of difference with the ability to hear.
He's the owner of the property, yes, 15, 17, Coleman.
Oh, can you, sorry, guys, can you stand over the edge of the camera and peggy out?
My letter was to introduce ourselves to the board, to indicate that Alan of C.P. Berry, developed C.P. Caldwell Farm a few years ago, and he said we're attracted and issues on town. What Alan would like to do is a similar kind of redevelopment on the property that Mark and his family own, that's Witchstone Farm, 15, 17, Coleman. It'd be the same sort of approach, that would preserve an extensive area of open space. Two-thirds of the site would remain open space, it'd be a cluster development, under your open space residential development that currently exists in your zoning bylaw. So we honor all of those provisions. We objectively have an over 55 acre project, which does not produce school age children. Alan has done some rough calculations, and the initial fee to the town, the one time for permanent, we've got $140,000. In addition to that, the ongoing annual revenue to the town would exceed $200,000 each year. That without any impact on the school system. I think the history with Caldwell Farm has been very good, in the sense that I'm not sure the police have any problems, and we're dealing with senior citizens who don't cause difficulty. And it'd be the same kind of attractive layout that exists. The property is subject to a 61A, an agricultural forest restriction, which means that if the property is sold, the town has a right to purchase it. And you can purchase it for the purchase price. It's not the stage yet where we have a contract to present to you. There is a contract existing, but doesn't meet the standards of Chapter 61A. So we're simply here to express with the overview with what the intention is on Alan's part. See if there are any questions you may have, hopefully to give you comfort in that. And to try and see whether or not the selectmen would have an intention to exercise that right to purchase, or feel that with what's being proposed, and the revenue that would come to the town, the preservation of open space would be enough comfort to the town to let the process go forward. So that's pretty much why we wanted to come here, is to introduce ourselves, see if there are any questions you have, and then see if there's any feedback as far as what the selectmen's had to do. That's pretty much it.
Okay. In regards to the open space that you're going to be preserving, would that be open to the public? And, you know, what sort of, what style of open space will it be? Will it be cleared, will it be forested? What is that going to look like in this development?
The objective is to leave the open space in its natural condition. And Caldwell Farm had a conservation restriction in perpetuity. So it could never be developed. The public had a right to use it. It was, in that case, it was under the control of the condominium association. This would be a condominium of formal ownership, even though there'd be individual structures on the site. Of course, the planning board would have a great deal of say over what would happen there and how it could occur. I mean, the bylaw says that it could be for agricultural purposes, because it would have left it in an open natural state. I think there was a, maybe a quarterly, quarter-year mowing, retreating of the area, but it was not a lot of heavy activity. There was a trail along the back of the property. That same kind of a restriction, it used to be imposed on the situation.
My question would be, how many acres are there, or how many units are there?
Twenty-five units are proposed. There are about 32 acres, and of that, about 22, 23 acres would be left as open space. So two-thirds of it left as open space. And that's the theory of clustered bylaw, that the units can be brought close together, but comfortably situated, so people aren't worried about each other, to keep a massive amount of open space, that be set back some distance from the road.
What access road, where is it coming in from? Did you get that figured out yet?
We can show, you want to show, this is just a conceptual sketch.
Yeah. If we're just going through that with another whole...
Oh, is that right?
Kind of fresh on, I'm just here.
This is very conceptual. Actually, Woodbury had cameras come up with some ideas on what could be done in there. And I think this was the one that we were the most interested in, would preserve the largest amount of open space. There's a few things that we're going to have to change on this. I know this is very, very preliminary, but, you know, fire access, you know, these areas are very good. Fire trucks backing up and all that, so this will probably end up being more like a lead...
What's, what's out here?
These are single-family house lots.
Judges' land?
Judge's land, probably.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's two lots over here.
But like if they were, like if they were dwellings close to the property line, are they, they're, are they depicted or not depicted on this?
They're not, they're not depicted. There's two house lots over there, called Caldwell Farm, 17 acres. I wonder if they're loving a half acre, if it's 18 acres.
Nori.
Eighteen acre, we're locking down the outside. They're loving to take their lives, and they decided not to build, so they're still selling them.
Yeah.
And that house is right around here, isn't it?
The green tree and lawn book are right above here.
Lawn book is a meter above here, and green tree...
Yeah, that's very close.
But like the light green now, that's some, you know, some works?
As always, the light green is the huff line, open space. The dark green is the flat green. The farmhouse is the bottom step. They're going to...
And there's a, is that an existing level crossing?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Do you need to mention the trails, where the trail went out?
Yeah, there's trails, so... There are actually spots here, and stuff...
I'm going to shut up front, because I can't.
First ones, it seems like they were conservative.
Yeah, they really... Same idea, is that it's a single-family condominium, so it's not going to be a multiple-family building, which I think is more attractive.
So they're not going to be telling us?
They'll have several families, I'm sure.
Okay. Will they be up and down, like two floors, or kind of a living, or do we not know yet?
No, they'll be, usually they do is have, you know, a massive bedroom on the first floor, and a loft, the second bedroom on the second floor.
It has to meet the state standard for over 55 houses, which does require a massive bedroom in the first floor. So it allows for one floor, but it's...
But the question, I think, for us is not really about the design or the development, but is there any interest for the town and the property? And, I mean, I'd have to think about it a little bit more, but right off the top of my head, I don't see any reason that we would want to buy it.
You know, it doesn't apply to anything we own, or try to own, or anything of the sort like that, so it wouldn't be, you know, like, great when you own that. Because I don't have?
No, no, we just want to get a consensus that helps us, as we plan our move forward. Certainly be in communication with the town to stay in touch.
Yeah, and I would encourage anyone who's watching that has an interest to let us know, because always want to hear from people about things like this.
I saw the work that was done, Caldwell Farm, area process on, I'm sure I will be here.
Yeah, I mean, we're just, the reason we're asking these questions is, you know, before we go through, we go through all the planning board process, conservation's, board of health. At least we have an idea whether the town is interested in purchasing the property or not, so that, you know, waste everybody's time.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't see any reason that we should buy it, do you guys?
Me neither, but...
Do you, do you want some, a little time to digest it?
Yeah, I think, I don't feel comfortable saying definitively that we won't buy it at this time. I feel like we need to let the process run its course, and see if there's, see if something comes up that makes us want to buy it, I just don't see it at present.
Do you know when you would anticipate some of your time, the notification?
Oh, it's not going to be till, probably a few months away. What Alan's going to do is pursue the proper zoning procedure. And then before, before we come back, before we have a formal notice, or before Mark's family gets a formal notice, it'll be actually to play with the permits or the policy in hand.
So, the next meeting will be the 10th, right? And when after that will be the 24th, will that be the time to take it all there?
Please, in a couple, couple of months, so, I mean, he'll send us the letter, just to be aware. You got it.
Thank you very much, Peter.
All right, thank you, guys.
I'm seeing it.
Okay, we have liquor licenses and business licenses. I am going to recuse myself from the post too.
All right, one day liquor license, Mercury Brewing and Distributing Company, Ipswich Ale Brewery, Oktoberfest celebration at the Spencer Pierce Little Farm to Lanes Lane, Friday, October 13th, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Most October.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
One, one day liquor license, but do you want me to skip the other Spencer Pierce?
No, just these two, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'll skip down to the second, that's something I should... One day liquor license, Greater Newburyport Families Club Halloween Party at Spencer Pierce Little Farm to Little's Lane, Saturday, October 21st, 2017, 1:00 to 4:00 PM.
Most October.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Okay. One day liquor license, Byfield Community Arts Center, 7 Central Street, Byfield, Cat McCradle Coffee House, Saturday, October 21st, 2017, from 7:30 to 10:30 PM.
Second.
Discussion? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
One day liquor license, Song Duck Dog, Ten Hanover Drive, bridal shower at Peta Hall, April Island Turnpike, Saturday, October 7th, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion?
It's a long bridal shower.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Okay, now we're going to review, approve, hopefully in sign. 2017 business license renewals as follows. Michael Morris Schnell of BMW Performance, 26 Middle Road, Unit 1, general business slash automotive. Want to approve?
Signed.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Bernadette Gosin, Pilates of Newbury Import, 89 Hanover Street, general business slash Pilates studio.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have John.
Oh, already?
Ready for you, huh?
I thought you guys had already heard everything I had to say, sorry about that. If I don't speak loudly, I'm so deaf, I can't, I have no idea what I said.
Do you want to stand up for theirs?
Over here?
Yes.
The squeaky wheel gets the grease.
I'm not sure about that. I just want to get me home, I'm out of here. All right, thanks, Tom. Okay, well, first of all, thank you very much for letting us make this feel. We are in the final throes of wrapping up the Sandy Grant. Does anybody know what that, what that is? Okay. The Newbury's team reviewed it a bit over a month ago, and it's now in the final stages of wrap-up. And it is going to be presented to the world at the Great Marsh Symposium, which is an annual happening in Essex, put on by Essex County, Greenbelt, and others. And it's going to be presented there. And I know that a couple of you usually go to that. You all have seen the copy, we sent a copy out a few days ago. That is not the final edition, but it's pretty close. The final edition will be coming out sometime in the next few weeks, okay? Now, Kristen is going to invite you to go to the Great Marsh Symposium on, again, the 9th of November.
Do you know what time, John?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what time?
It's, it's an all-day affair, I think it starts around 8, does it not, 8:00 to 8:30? She just happened to have anything to say.
I just happened to have one to tell you.
This is Kristen Grubbs, by the way, Ipswich River Water Association. She has been Mrs. Sandy Grant for us. And by good fortune, she actually lives in Newbury, sure her husband is on the faculty at... I refuse to say the Governor's Academy, that's a dumb one. I never know, I never know to say that.
I worked there when it was GDX, so I'm still with the Governor's owner crew.
So, where else do you get green crab? Pardon me? Where else do you get green crab for lunch? There you go, right, yeah, certainly not in Angie's, that's what... So, anyway, this is a good time for Kristen to kind of come up, because she's going to walk you through very briefly what the, what the program is all about. I would say that if you would like a more detailed walkthrough, that may be helpful, rather than read what you see here, this is the report, and it's only... This is only the Newbury portion, actually, Newbury and Newburyport, because we're interconnected. If you, you know, it's about three times as thick, if you look at all the towns involved, from Salisbury to Essex. So this is fairly heavy reading. If you, if you'd like to have a session in a regular meeting, or some other time, I'm sure we'd be glad to, glad to furnish that, that's totally your call. So, take it away, Kristen.
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much for having me. Just, as John said, I just want to really thank the town of Newbury. You've had a great task force, a municipal group, made up of some of the people around Martha, John in particular, have taken real leadership roles with this task force. We've had meetings over the last two and a half years, it's really been, been a good, long project, and we're all very excited to be finishing up the document. It will be mostly an online document, so it'll be accessible to everybody. It does have different chapters for each of the towns, so Newbury has both a vulnerability assessment, that's looking at some of the most important areas of concern relative to sea level rise, flooding, and other climate impacts. And then the sort of second half of the document is recommendations in different categories about how to start working towards addressing some of those risk areas. So it really runs the gamut from just kind of best practices, things like trying to encourage continuing a committee or a task force to keep looking at these things. We're also looking at policy strategies, how to incorporate the recommendations into the stuff that a town needs to be doing anyway, so whether that's master planning, or public works, you know, capital improvements. There's a lot of looking at things like culverts and bridges, what kind of impacts those will be seeing as we look into the future. So we really want to continue to help transition towns from this real planning stage, and that's really what this November 9th workshop is all about, is let's all get together, the six towns, five towns in one city, who've been working on this, and think about, you know, here's our plan, here's our assessment, here's some recommendations that we've come at together, how can we make sure that we continue to support the region, work with all the partners who are out there? There are a lot of partners, not just Ipswich River Water Association, but other nonprofit partners. There's really a richness of other organizations and entities, both state agencies, local nonprofits, like Greenbelt, The Refuge, they're trustees of reservations. There are a lot of folks who are talking about these issues, and really want to work together regionally to keep moving them forward. So that's what we're sort of gearing up, this public unveiling of the document on November 9th, and talking about the next stage of implementation. And just to echo John, I do have a lot of specific information that I could come back and talk to Newbury about, if that's something we want to do at a selectmen's meeting or another time. Put some slides up, look at the maps, get it available to the public, and the television, and all that. So, happy to do that at another time. This meeting is, you know, our attempt to bring together a regional conversation about the issues. I brought one agenda, but we have the climate director from Governor Baker's office is giving the keynote. Donna Holliday from Newbury Board will be coming to sort of on the panel. We're asking some of the local planners and conservation agents who've been involved in the project to talk about things their community is already starting to do. And certainly hope members of Newbury will be there as well to aid in that. Oh, and the one other thing, just to highlight, and I'll stop talking. We've asked two speakers of regional partnerships, similar to the Great Marsh partnership, to come talk to us about how, you know, where they are in their planning stage, where their municipalities are, and thinking about these issues. One is the Seacoast Group from New Hampshire, so Julie Labranach, who's actually lives in Amesbury, but works for Rockingham County, is coming to talk about that coastal working group. And then the other group is down in the Taunton watershed, which is south Massachusetts, towards Rhode Island. They have a group called Resilient Taunton Network, and they've been doing some really great workshops with their planners and their communities, and we're going to hear from both of them about, you know, lessons learned, what, you know, what can you share with us about how to carry this work forward in this region? So, I'll stop there, but any questions, I'm, you know, happy to come back another time. I know this is a busy agenda tonight, so...
My first question is, I know the selectmen are invited to the symposium, but is it open to the general public?
It is, yes. So, registration is at greatmarsh.org. It's $15, which gets you a great lunch of green crabs and other food, if you're not a green crab fan.
There's a Dunkin' Donuts right around the corner.
Yeah, and it's at Woodman's, Function Hall, right behind Woodman's Restaurant on the Causeway in Essex. But yeah, the public's encouraged, we definitely want to get people involved in the planning boards, conservation commissions, hazard mitigation committee, those kinds of people who are already working on these kinds of issues, I'm sick of all that.
I read that, I'm not going to have a chance to read that document, but I did read it.
I'm amazed, you, you read that?
Not cover to cover.
Oh, okay, yeah, but just to open it is amazing, thank you.
And I read the Newbury part of it, and I do have some questions and concerns, so I would love for you to...
Okay, you, you want to air them out, or you want to have another session?
No, we'll come back.
Okay, fine, great member.
Great.
Okay.
Get for sound minutes, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you guys for all the work.
Sorry, but I'm not done. The next chapter is another program for which we got, I don't know, 12, $15,000 grant about the SOPAQ. It's called the Municipal Vulnerability Planning Program. And it's state money, this Sandy Grant is federal money, of course, this is state money. And, you know, you don't start saving for your kid's college when they're going into their senior year. It doesn't, that doesn't work out real well. This is going, this is coming, it's going to be a damn disaster, so the sooner we get underway, and get ourselves together on what we're going to do, the better. Okay, these grant programs tend to be somewhat duplicative, but by the same token, they're, they're like medals. The more medals you have, the faster you get promoted. And we're, we're going to be trying to get money out of the state, out of the feds, for, to assist us in not necessarily planning, but actually doing. And, you know, it seems appropriate that we tap every opportunity to develop some, some, you know, some medals. Okay, this Great Marsh is, is the first one. The second one is the state program. Now, that money that I mentioned goes to, the town gets to hire, in fact, the town has to hire, sort of facilitated people, they're called providers, but basically, they're people kind of in the business that took a day's course in, in trying to get people together and focused, and headed all in the same direction. A lot of us took it, Kristen's one, I'm another one. We're not going to be hired by you, because you can help us for nothing, I already told Kristen. She'd love to work for us, but she doesn't get to, she gets to be on the committee that, that works with it. Why should we pay her when she lives right across the, across the street over there? Anyway, we need to hire somebody in the near future, and to hire somebody, we need to talk to them. And I went to a program in, they had four of them, draw from state, I went to the one in Westboro. I identified two or three people that I think might be worth talking to. Kristen went to the one at Northern Essex, and she did the same. And we know now who the qual, the people that have, I hesitate to say qualified, it's a very, very short training program. But it's very much like the Sandy Grant, and that's a good thing, because we can whizz right through it. But the bad thing is, we've probably beaten the planning part of this to death, and that we need to get now thinking about what we're really going to do. You've got the classic Trinity on planning. You've got a goal, you want to make something happen. Town government, namely you guys, make a policy that gets that going, and then you have the implementation. This is where the rubber hits the road. And the Sandy Grant program, and this new one, the way it's set up, deals primarily with the first. You know, what are our goals? A little bit of policy. I think it's time we got into policy, pretty heavy, and then start dabbling into the specifics. So hopefully, we can get a provider that will think along those lines, and let us zip right through the far up policy and goal thing, and let us get to where we're actually talking about real things. I mean, say we need a generator, a mobile generator, we need a truck and a generator, and places to plug it in, at all the places where it needs to be plugged in. Well, you've got to take all that out, you've got to get it into some year's budget. You've got to buy the dog end thing, you've got to teach people how to run it, you know. After all that, now it's worth something. But just to have it on a piece of paper saying we ought to do that, is really not terribly helpful, when you need one, okay? So, again, we have this program that has reared its head. We're ready to go with it, except we do not have a, an official body that's going to deal with them, okay? Kicking it around informally among the people that have been involved in it thus far, it seems probably the hazard mitigation crowd is the best one. We do need to augment it with, they're going to want to see a much larger committee than that. We need people from Plum Island, maybe Plumbush, certainly people from the Parker River area, Old Raleigh Road, people that are going to be impacted before anyone else is, that have, you know, have a, have a dog in the fight, that will have to be part of this operation. But it needs to be run by somebody that, you know, a full-time employee in the town, and so forth. So that's just something to think about.
Can I just make one additional comment? One thing I heard at the training is, that's different from our planning project, is this is looking at a whole, the broader climate impact, so it's looking at, talking about things like energy, and drought, and water resources, and, you know, this project really looked at coastal flooding and sea level rise issues. So that's, I think, something that Newbury... So that's, I think, something that Newbury can really take advantage of.
Absolutely.
Talking a little more about some of those kinds of issues.
Right. The Sandy Grant thing, because there were six towns involved and, you know, you could spread yourself only so thin, they dealt with four problems. Two highways flooding, the Plum Island thing, I forget what the fourth one was. But anyway, we're going to, we've probably got at least a dozen. We've got septic systems that are going to, septic tanks that are going to get floated out of the ground. We've got gas tanks in the same position. We've got seawater intrusion into wells that are fairly closed. We've got a lot of stuff going on. We've got a lot of stuff that the climate change is going to impact us with, besides the sea level rise. That's, that's the biggest, biggest thing for a lot of the town. I mean, Pine Island, Plum Island, the park, vicinity of the Parker River, they're going to be really hurting. But it's going to, it's going to impact us all. You know, we're not going to get something like, you know, Puerto Rico just put up with, but we're going to get something a lot worse than we want to deal with, and we're going to have to be ready. We're going to be really hurt. So anyway, I'm just saying that to give you, you know, get you thinking about it and figure out how we're going to do this. Okay? It can't be done with the people that we've got now. We've got to broaden that considerable.
Okay.
Are you going to come forward to us with a proposed committee, or do you want us to start reaching out to people?
No, I was just asking you to think about it. Maybe, maybe, you know, Jeff is the, is the person that's been working on this right along. Maybe you guys figure out what you thought, think, and then pass it down to the troops to implement, and we'll get back to you with that. Obviously, you're going to have to approve the membership. That's, that's a given. But I'm not asking you to do anything other than, you know, decide what body is going to be in charge of this. And then, at that point, then we talk. If you want to put out names, that's fine. We'll put out names. You approve whatever.
Well, I just wasn't sure if we were at the point where we needed to actually start forming this committee.
Yeah, I'd say so. I'd say so. If we're supposed to be hiring this person, and there's nobody to hire, nobody officially designated to be running this grant program.
Okay.
And this is going to take some time. It's going to be a lot, fair amount of work.
When would you like to see a committee in place?
I'm sorry?
When would you like to see a committee in place?
As a committee in place, I'd like to say about the time of the Great Marsh Symposium, a bit over a month from now. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We're going to be hiring somebody pretty doggone quick.
I think the consultant who you hire can help the town put together the committee and can explain a little more about what, you know, how much time, what does that mean, what, you know, what kind of representation you want at the table. I would say there's sort of, yeah, there's someone who needs to hire the person on behalf of the town. Then maybe there's a, you know, two or three people kind of thing, like putting their heads together. And then there's going to be more like 20 or 30 people who are asked to actually participate in the workshops. And it's a fiscal year grant, so it all has to be done by June 30th. So once all the trainers are done in October, the towns who have been awarded the grant will be ready to hire someone, you know, end of October, November, and then have six months to work on the project.
Okay.
Look, my point is, at this point, to my knowledge, there's nobody set up to be doing the interviewing.
Should we, would it be proactive to authorize?
Yeah, I was going to say, let's authorize Tracy in consultation with the emergency management group to hire who we need?
It was the hazard management.
Hazard management.
Yeah.
But that's your call. That was just what it boiled down to.
I second the motion.
Discussion.
Appreciate all the work you guys are doing, and we'll try and support you in any way we can.
Right. All those will pay up?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Kristin. Okay, time to review and finalize proposed town meeting law in preparation for special town meeting, October 24th, 2017.
Are you ready to join us?
I think so. Of course, I'm fine.
Okay. What's that?
Are they ready to come in?
Yep.
Do you guys want to join us at the table? You can't, if you'd like.
Sure.
Come on over there.
I'm getting away with it. Much of it aside.
Did you? Do you guys want to join us at the table? You can, if you'd like.
Sure.
Come on over there.
I'm getting away with it. Much of it aside.
Did you? Hey. Do you guys want to join us at the table? You can, if you'd like.
Sure.
Come on over there.
I'm getting away with it. Much of it aside. Did you?
Do you guys want to join us at the table? You can, if you'd like.
Sure.
Come on over there.
I'm getting away with it. Much of it aside.
Did you? Do you guys want to join us at the table? You can, if you'd like.
Sure.
Come on over there.
Do we need to open any forums here? I think you are.
We're already open.
Okay.
Actually, we're not.
All right, so we have a relatively small agenda for action at this special town meeting, which will be occurring on October 24th, 7:00 p.m. I think the ideal goal for us is to not have to have all special town meetings unless something unusual would happen to come up during the course of the fiscal year. We've gotten much better at our annual budgeting. We used to have, you know, a myriad of line item adjustments that we'd have to make every year because we wouldn't get state information timely. That's all kind of gone away. We're getting our reporting much more, our estimates much more timely, I should say. And we've certainly streamlined our annual operating budget to the point where this year, you can see, we've only got two changes. One, the first one, the IT program services salary and wages, that is a longevity bonus that is included in our personnel bylaw that I just missed. So I'm adding that $500 in. And the second one is just represents the amount of the deficit in that account. Finance committee would recall, we had a year-end transfer into that. So those would address those two items relative to our annual operating budget. Article two is what we refer to as an unpaid bill. We, our fiscal year closes at June 30th. We have until July 15th to get all outstanding bills processed. Beyond that point, if we haven't received a bill or if it doesn't get processed timely, it has to go to town meeting for action, and it requires a nine-tenths vote of the electorate to get approved. The next one, Article three, and normally, we would have had this presented to the capital planning committee first and then the select would second, but the capital planning committee will be taking it up tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m.
That's right.
Right? Tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. But this is a proposal being presented by the Work Fire Ideas, as well as the facilities component of the DPW, requesting $92,000. And this money would come from the available balances in the town hall sewer connection account. That article, that project came in about $148,000 under budget, so we're going to ask to transfer 92,000 of that available, those available funds to replace all the HVAC systems and to also petition off some rooms in the hall. There's going to be a bunk room, a day room, and some offices. That's what's going to be done there. Well, after the funding is received, we'll have to go up to bill, to bid for the, for the units, but we do have some votes that we've received.
Simple majority required.
That's a simple majority, yeah.
Question. In all our buildings, we have, we've always, this becomes a new building for us to be responsible for.
Correct.
In that sense.
Right.
And like the highway bond, have we done a commission, an engineering study on the whole building itself?
Yes, we have. We actually use the same, the same group that did the library and the Newbury Elementary School.
And in that, in that budget, this was identified as a primary concern, or was it just something that didn't?
I don't remember the priority of concern. I'd have to look back.
Okay, but then we have on file a total comprehensive building evaluation.
Building envelope study, like we did with the other buildings. Yep. Yep. And I can get that to you. I'm conscious of that.
How much will be remaining in the sewer account, and will that be transferred to free cash?
No, the plan is in the spring at the annual town meeting, whatever available balances, somewhere around $56,000 or so thousand dollars would be transferred into the Scotland Road project account so that we can add a little bit more to that account.
Further down the road.
Exactly. Exactly.
I like it.
All right. The next article proposed is Article four, that we have finally come to an agreement of terms for the purchase of a property that is owned by the Williamson family. The property is located at 31 Plum Island Boulevard. That is a single-family residential dwelling right now. The plan would be to convert that into permanent bathroom facilities for the Plum Island area, getting rid of the portable units. It would be a seasonal, the seasonal program opened from May, late May to early October, similar to what we do now in the center area. Part of the negotiations, we have not actually executed purchase and sale. The town council has drafted it up. I've had a meeting with them. All indications are that everyone's prepared to, to execute, should be done prior to town One of the other terms that I thought was key was that they would agree to give us a right of first refusal to purchase the adjacent parking lot. They're not, they do not have any desire to sell it at this point in time, but when they decide to sell it, they would, you know, allow us to match any bona fide offer that they would have. That would provide a revenue stream for us, obviously. We've had a lot of discussions in committee meetings over the years relative to some of the services the islanders would like to see brought back, things like lifeguards and, you know, stockpiling Sam for emergencies, those types of things. So this would provide us a long-term revenue stream, you know, should they decide to sell it.
First step in three very major issues we have in the center now, the bathrooms, the rubbish, and parking. It seems from your comment that this 350 is to purchase the land. Has there been an estimate on what the, what the construction cost would be? Did you said that these facilities would be permanent facilities?
It would be a permanent facility. It would be turned into a rental facility.
So we're going to anticipate costs in addition to the 350 to make it complete?
Absolutely. 350 is solely to purchase the building and the right of first refusal on the parking area. We've had meetings with the planner, the conservation agent, the building inspector to kind of understand the process. It's going to be a very lengthy process that we have to go through, requiring Zodiac Ord appeals. We have to go for a waiver at the Architectural Access Board because we'd be renovating more than 50%, which requires going up. We wanted to see if we could petition for a waiver for that. So it would be, it would be a pretty significant undertaking. I would anticipate at least a year of going through process. On the low end, probably 150, could exceed, you know, 350. Again, it all has to go up to bid, and it's a long-term project. I will tell you, I have had a number of conversations with our legislative delegation, Senator Tar, Senator Tar's office in particular, as well as F State Representative's office, his assistant I've spoken to. They are all fully committed to working with us on this project and securing additional funding. I don't know all of the history. It was before I got here, but at some point in time, there were funds available to do a permanent bathroom facility on the island, but it was when we were having problems with the erosion, and those funds were used for the firebag systems. It was funding, I understand, that was secured by Ron Barrett in Peta Hall initially, and they agreed to allow the town to use it for the sandbags instead. So they're all very much aware of that. They are, like I said, committed. There's no dollar amounts on the table, but they are very committed to, to working with us to get some aspect of the construction funding.
How large is the property itself? Is it half an acre, quarter acre, 30?
Point three.
It's supposed to be.
Point oh three. It's very small, very small. It's a little over 1,000.
Is there area around the building, the parking?
Square feet? There's room, there's room for a service, a cleaning vehicle.
He's the building.
He's the building.
Oh, it's building?
Yeah, the square foot of the building.
I thought you asked for the lot size.
I sent you an email. I think it's 0.325. What did you say? I have it.
3 is a three-thirds of a hunk. Or is it a tenth?
It's tiny, tiny.
Postive zero.
0.35 acres.
There's room, there's room for a service vehicle, room to maneuver around.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
And a crosswalk across the center.
And if you sneeze, your neighbor says garbage.
So that would require an attendant to park a vehicle there.
Correct.
An attendant, yeah.
Right, that's it.
But only one.
But only one.
Any questions? We've indicated that you have a lot of approvals to get, and you said, how comfortable are you about getting these approvals? Because if we don't get the approvals that you mentioned, whatever they were, then we won't be able to move ahead with the project and we'll be stuck with a piece of property.
No, you'd have to sell it. You couldn't get the approvals. But that's why we had the preliminary meetings, and all indications were positive.
So that you'll get the approvals.
Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll never tell you we'll definitively get it. You have to go through the process.
I was asking how comfortable you are working. Are you think, if they were 80, 90% comfortable getting all these approvals?
80, 90.
You know what? We have an excellent team here, and I have confidence.
Architectural Access Board may jack your personal, jack your, you know.
For sure, for sure.
No, but your costs in terms of.
This sounds like a heck of a lot of money. When you sit down and think, how much money we spend on board employees every year? I was astonished how expensive they really are.
They're very expensive.
Yeah. So if we take that away, that, that takes a big nut, bite out of the nut.
Seems like potentially it could be a real enhancement of the whole area.
As far as the general plan, buying a piece of property has to be done, you know.
Yeah. All bodies just don't cut it.
Political cost.
People unhappy.
I think I asked you about the.
I sent you the numbers. They were relatively modest.
You know, cleaning.
Probably like, I, I think the projections were under $6,000 for the year.
Are they going to have retirees clean?
Volunteer?
No, I'm not retired.
So in that, where that's a purchase of land, that requires a two-thirds vote, so that's got a higher bar for town meeting approval. Article five, we're seeking $9,711.97 to cover the deficit that we have in the police detail account. We've been working on this for, well, about part of the last two years. This is all prior to 2011. We have internal controls in place now with the detail account so that basically someone works the detail, they get paid the detail, there's a receivable, there are attempts made at collection, and there's reconciliation process with the town accountant, between the town accountant and the police department. Prior to that, those controls weren't in place. You know, in different conversations I've had, well, where did the money go? What happened? But, you know, I can't tell you. I can't tell you if it was ever billed. But, you know, I can't tell you. I can't tell you if it was ever billed, if we never collected it, or if it got classified into a wrong account. I cannot answer those questions because you didn't have the internal controls in place at that point in time. Um, what I can tell you is prior to that date, you know, it shouldn't, those types of things can't happen again with the controls we have in place, but from an auditing perspective, we can't keep running that deficit forward. I mean, it's been running forward for years and years and years, and you really need to.
Didn't we address this?
You addressed it with, um, the gun permit fees. What's that account called?
Okay.
Firearms licensing.
Firearms licensing, yeah, yeah, firearms licensing, but not with details. So that's what that is, um.
So that would permanently address that?
That would address the deficit that we've been able to identify through, and we've confirmed it with, you know, the auditors. We've been through it all with them. They're all aware of it. Um, it's not new. Um, we've been able to even the last couple of years improve upon the process. I, you know, my guess is, and it is only a guess, we didn't aggressively pursue collections in Newbury. We didn't with, you know, real estate taxes, motor vehicle, we didn't with a lot of different things. So that would be my guess, um, but I cannot tell you definitively. Are there any?
This, ninety-seven hundred dollars, okay. Uh, we're going to transfer that somewhere. Where's it going to go?
That would go into the revolving account, the detailed revolving account.
So basically, this is going into a revolving account. It's not going to help or anything, or is it?
Oh, no, the money was paid over the years. The money, yeah.
So what we're doing is collecting, or we're just doing a book transfer?
Exactly.
So that our records indicate that we are in balance.
Exactly, yeah.
And are there any other accounts like this that are lingering out there?
Um, Article Six, the nine-one-one grant account, that was in two thousand and, I believe it was two thousand sixteen. Um, there was a bill that was charged against the grant that the state didn't pay, so there's a deficit account in that. I mean, a deficit balance of a hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-three cents in that.
And that should be the end.
And that should be it?
Mm-hmm.
So the state's not going to pay it, they're not going to want their grant.
How much did, how much did they have?
I don't know what the total of that grant was.
I think it was eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, somewhere around that.
Yeah, we've seen that in the school, but we'll heard of it again. Twenty-two percent of what they say.
Okay, um, Article Seven is the proposal. You saw that before, it was on the last fall town meeting. It's moving towards, um, the fire, uh, the strong fire chief. This was brought to us by the Board of Fire Engineers, and it was also a recommendation, I don't know if you remember, we had the consultants coming into a study, and that was one of their recommendations that we moved towards that. Article Eight, um, Donald Jarvis brought us that proposal, uh, a number of weeks or maybe months ago, asking, um, that we adopt that section of the general law that would allow veterans to volunteer and work in exchange for a break on their taxes, um, very similar to our senior review program that we operate.
Is there a cap? Is there a limit on that? Is it similar to seniors?
It is the same thing. You know what?
Remember what top he had done?
It's either a thousand or twelve dollars.
Yeah, a thousand come to mind.
I think it was adjusted to eleven, is my recollection.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's eleven.
Sorry.
It's okay, let's see now.
Exactly. And, let's see, Article Nine.
And how much are we paying them? Well, if, if, you know, if you're, you're offering veterans a break on taxes for working, how much are you going to give them per hour?
Minimum wage.
Just minimum wage?
I think what we would do is model it similar to the way we do the senior rebate program. It's like eleven dollars an hour, and they work up to a hundred hours.
Want some extra work?
No, thanks. I have people who take care of that for me.
Chief, do you want to present Article Nine? Chapter forty-one, the alcoholic beverages and marijuana.
Um, Article Nine, what I'm looking for, what I'm requesting is the, much like we have a public drinking bylaw, where you can't be walking around drinking alcohol in public on a public way. Um, I'd like that with the consumption of marijuana. Um, I think it's pretty obvious that nobody wants to be sitting with their children in a park and having people smoking marijuana all around them, and, uh, I think it's a, uh, I think it's a, uh, just makes con, it's common sense, uh, as far as I'm concerned. I'm sure there'll be some debate about it on town meeting floor, but I'm willing to stand up and put that around, but really, that's it.
My, I guess my only question is, why does it read different than the alcohol provision? Why do they look similar?
I got that wording right from a model policy from the state, so I copied and verbatim. I wasn't going to reinvent the wheel, but, um.
So the, the state, they are issuing some guidelines, but the situational.
Yep, a lot of towns are going forward with that type of, uh, bylaw, a public consumption bylaw, and, um, the state came up with some model, model, uh, wording, so that's where it came from. That's why it's different.
That was my only question.
And Martha, Article Ten, our question for planning board.
When the full master's test, did we not have, Mike, did we not have an alcohol, alcohol consumption bylaw before?
Yes, this is, this is just in addition to, it's under the same section as the alcohol bylaw. I've just added the marijuana subsection, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, so for the proposed temporary moratorium of marijuana establishments, this is in response to the passage last November of the recreational marijuana, um, statute, which has been undergoing quite some flux since then. Uh, cannabis control commission has been appointed. They're going to be promulgating regulations by March fifteenth. So the feeling is that in order to give us enough time to really digest those regulations and all the considerations that are going, uh, should, will be going into the town's decision on how to regulate recreational marijuana, or if the town even wants to do that, or wants to prohibit it, or, you know, whatever the decision is, this will give us some time to, to go through that process in a, you know, in a thoughtful manner. Uh, the goal would be, the proposal is to, um, have a moratorium in effect, um, through, until December of next year. But the goal would be to get a bylaw or some other action, um, like fall town meeting. Spring is too soon because the regulations, um, won't be promulgated till March, and there's just not enough time to go through the public hearing process and everything else for zoning amendments.
That's it.
Go through and vote on each one now?
The door, or is anybody?
Well, I checked Article Ten, so I think we'll get one at a time.
All right, gotcha. Okay, so we'll go through.
No, we'll wait until you vote.
Okay, oh yeah, that's right, we do the whole private thing after.
It's an open, it's an open meeting. We really should be, we're responsible.
All right, um, motion to approve Article One.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve Article Two. I should probably read, I should probably be reading these off, just so it's clearer. Um, Article Two, see if the town will vote to authorize a payment of the following fiscal year, twenty seventeen bills, said sums to be taken from free cash or to take any other action in relation there to, uh, topaz engineering, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Three, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of ninety-two thousand dollars or any other sum from the town hall sewer connection account to fund the replacement of the HVAC systems and make various repairs to the Morgan Avenue fire station, or take any other action in relation there to. Motion to approve. Second. Discussion.
How long do we expect that the fire station is going to stay standing at this point? Um, and the reason I ask is because some systems can be moved and reused, some systems can't. I was curious if we'd looked at the replacement of that building in conjunction with the replacement of this heating system and what that might look like.
The reports that were given to me from the DPW, your director, were that they were not only economical, they're not really functional, but they were not safe. They're exhausting into the building, I guess the CO two going into the building. I don't, I don't, you know, know the CO, uh, going into the building, um, so they, they have to be replaced.
That, that's not insert a question. The question is, can they be reused or they'll be removed?
The, or the, the new ones?
Yeah, so if we, if we make this investment at this time,
Yep.
is the system that we're contemplating putting in there something that we can then pull out, put in a work shed, and put back into the next building, because we are going to be building a new building, hopefully, hopefully, before any HVAC system we buy right now should be dead. So I want to, I at least want to bring that up as a concern, that we look at the feasibility of reuse of this system, because I know that that building has a few years left in it, but a, a good HVAC system should last fifteen or twenty years.
It's the same thing as in the town hall, that should transfer all.
The infrared tube heaters that are going to be eating, uh, heating the bays, and then the other systems are those, um, I think they're Mitsubishi product, the Daftlet heat and AC system. So I, I think they could be moved.
But also it was mentioned that they're going to petition the hall
Yes.
for offices, so there's more, ninety-two is just not for any air conditioning system. It's going to be for internal, internal, uh, modifications
Yes.
to accommodate offices space and use the open hall more appropriately.
Yeah, there's eleven thousand five hundred is the estimate for the infrared tube heaters, and then the, um, Daftlet AC systems are forty-nine thousand nine fifty, and then about thirty thousand for repairs to the building.
And those, yeah, the fact that those could be pulled out and put back in, I think, could save us money. I just, you know, if you're about to junk a car, you don't change the oil.
Change the tires.
So I just wanted to make sure we were looking at that aspect of potentially being able to use it moving forward.
Do you have more comfort now?
A little bit. I mean, I'd want to look a little more at the design, but I think we can approve it.
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Four, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or any other sum from the sale of land fund to purchase the property located at thirty-one Plum Island Boulevard, or to take any other action in relation there to. Motion to approve. Second. Discussion.
I'm glad Steve is finally moving forward.
Yeah, me too.
Me too. That'll be a major upgrade on the Port of Jones, hopefully.
Yeah, I'm glad, you know, we are a beach community and glad we're finally embracing it.
Does somebody have a, they present assessment of the problem?
An appraisal?
Yeah, or what we, what the tax, like your values?
Yeah.
Is it, you know, is it within the ballpark, so to speak, of what?
Well, we commissioned an appraisal. That's how we got the press. It's just the appraisal, and that's the, the trade property.
Yeah, it's okay. I just wanted, is it something in documentation that's that?
Yeah, we did that during the negotiations.
That price?
Yep.
That it's within, we don't stand over here.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Five, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of nine thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents or any other sum from free cash to cover the deficit in the police detail account, or to take any other action in relation there to. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-three cents or any other sum from free cash to cover the deficit in the nine-eleven grant account, the nine-one-one grant account, or to take any other action in relation there to. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law's Section Forty-eight, or Chapter Forty-eight, Section Forty-two A, which establishes a fire department under the direction of the Board of Selectment, or take any other action in relation there to. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Is there any fiscal impact with this decision, meaning we're going to say that now that we have established this regulation, we have salary levels for compensation of hierarchy, chief, assistant chief, that are set by the state for these positions?
No, no, we still have the ability to set those, our human resources board.
So we're not be told that, oh, by the way, because we have this, the chief must get X dollars based upon statement?
No.
Okay.
This is something else that we, that recommended to do, and I'm glad that we're moving forward on it.
It's nice to have, have it be submitted by the Board of Fire Engineers.
Yes.
I'd like to comment that there should be some mention at town meeting thanking the Board of Fire Engineers for their service in years. It looks like something that the town has been well served by these gentlemen and ladies over the years, you know, running the both departments, and we move them forward, but they should be recognized in some fashion. Absolutely, going back to the days when the town just couldn't, couldn't properly support the fire departments on their own. They never have. They supported themselves, but I think it'd be nice to recognize them in both sides.
Absolutely.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of GL, Section Fifty-nine, Section, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Five-N, which reduces the property tax obligation of veterans in exchange for volunteer services, or take any other action in relation there to. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter Forty-one of the town's general bylaw by replacing it in its entirety with the following, this was the alcoholic beverages and marijuana that the chief spoke to. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know, it's Article Ten that I am fixing.
Now to Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Newbury zone and bylaw, Article X general regulations, by adding a new section, ninety-seven dash ten H, Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments as follows. Further to amend Article X in the table of contents, to add Section ninety-seven dash ten H, Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments. Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I still think it's sending the wrong message, and that we should be instead encouraging our planning board to start framing the zoning law that we'd like to have in place, and I suggest to them that they frame it around the same that we have for the medical marijuana. I think we want more industry in this town, and I think this is setting up, setting a roadblock rather than telling people that they should be looking to our community as a place to bring business.
I think that argument is for the town floor. If we do not approve this, then the voters do not get a chance to weigh in on it. So we should vote this and let the town floor vote it up or down, not we vote it up or down. So I think we should approve this and, you know, let the chips fall where they may on the town floor.
I think the town voted fifty-six percent in favor of recreational marijuana. They've clearly already said what they think, but. clearly already said what they think, but...
Separate votes.
That's all I'm saying.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you much, Lee.
Thank you for, for, Frank Barleto, Maple Terrace. Um, I passed the law along with, um, John Luton, a citizen petition to, um, see if the town will vote to amend the Tony's Newbury zoning bylaws, Article three, um, about the special permit process. And I understand that for a special permit, I think it's a hundred signatures needed. I think we submitted eleven, but I also thought it may, and maybe read somewhere that it's up to the discretion of the selectmen. Am I wrong?
It's a vital, I'm trying to find it right now so I can read it too.
Annual town meeting requires, um, ten signatures, and we would have to put a petition on the warrant, but special town meeting, it requires a hundred signatures.
But I, but I, I was mistaken then when I read that, or, that the discretion of the selectmen?
Selectmen.
I was, I was mistaken, okay, that's understandable. I do wanna say...
The selectmen can put anything on a warrant that you require.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought, okay. And the reason why we presented this, we understand totally, totally without question, this has no bearing, none whatsoever, on what's proposed for the golf training facility. Um, we understand that. Um, it's been a long, hard process, not only for y'all, for the people that are for or against this, what's going on, um, and for the applicants. And for, we look at it as, and I attend a lot of these type of meetings in all different communities, um, the applicants that come forward and have to present to two different boards with two different mindsets, makes it very difficult, and it's a hard process for, for, not only for the applicants, but for you all, as our town fathers, mother, um, and planning board. So that's the reason why this was brought forward, just as it was done to...
Basically to expedite the process and make it cheaper and easier for who?
For everyone, not only the town, the applicants as well.
Applicants, realtors?
Everybody. The realtors, believe me, every time they come here, I'll get paid by the hour, so it doesn't cost me a dime except for...
I can, I can say, I just got a brief look at it today, I can say I'm most likely not in favor of stripping representation from our townspeople. That'll take five representatives right away from our townspeople. And you do have to present to two different boards with two different mindsets, but that's all part of the process.
Okay, um, it was done for the, um, it was already done for the solar projects?
I was against it.
Projects. I understand, and everyone, we all had our opinions, um, I understand that, but I wanted to bring this forward, um, tonight.
No, I know, what was, what was done with the solar?
When, um, back in the May of two thousand fifteen, um, same situation came up, the solar permitting on two acres or larger.
Right. So moving the special permit granting is already from the Board of Selectmen to, I haven't seen, I don't know what you, I don't know what this is.
It came in late today, later today.
Yeah.
Well, that was by the time I got to see it.
Yeah, I think we submitted a, a bit ago, a few days ago.
No, we got it today.
You, you got the final one today? It was certified today. Okay, we charged it in last week, I'm sorry.
So what is it? It's a petition asking to put a special payment across the planning board.
That moves the special permit process solely to the planning board.
I, I have a question about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Has anybody discussed this with Ginny? Because doing a zoning amendment is a very particular process under mass general law, so I'm not, and it has to go through public hearing, through the planning board, so I'm not even sure that this could be changed by petition.
Was it the la, was it changed for the solar by petition?
Not, no, not by petition.
Was it?
And then referred to the planning board for public hearing.
So, well, it's, maybe I'm wrong, and I'm sure I am, but please, direct me, what is the proper process to get a hundredth?
The process would be...
Okay, let's skip, let's skip this meeting for the special town. What would the proper process be to get it on the spring meeting?
Well, I would start with going to the town council and just find out if it's even legal.
What is legal, I mean, I do...
Right, I mean, I think it would be to bring it before the selectmen, see if the selectmen would like to refer it to the planning board for public hearing, or come to the planning board, um, and discuss it as a potential zoning change, and then it could be discussed between the two boards and...
So it has to go in front of the selectmen for their approval to pass along if the selectmen say that it's not, there's nothing we can do?
Right, they have to refer it back to the planning board for public hearing, and then it goes to town meeting and requires a two-thirds vote.
And if they don't refer back to the planning board?
Um, if it doesn't go through that process, my understanding is that the Attorney General won't approve it.
Okay, early citizens petition to put in front of the Board of Selectmen, in an annual town meeting, you need town signatures. At a special town meeting, and I'm gonna read it right from the thing, under state law, since the fall town meeting is a special town meeting, the Board of Selectmen must insert articles requested in writing by one hundred registered voters, or ten percent of the total number of registered voters, whichever is less. The voters have to sign their names, street numbers, and they have to be certified before presented to us, so, there you go.
I thought I read somewhere, and thank you for, 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 for coming forward with that, but I thought I had read that it could be, or, at the discretion of the selectmen.
It still would have had, would have been on a warrant last Thursday...
Okay.
Forty-eight hours prior to the meeting.
Understood.
Okay, so, that, that point was moved right off the bat.
All right, understood, but the next, we'll follow the other process for the spring meeting, and we'll get that...
Yes, okay, if you so desire, we will listen to you.
Given that the, the process that it has to go through the public hearing, I mean, the sooner it's submitted, the better. So you have plenty of time to refer it if you so desire, and go through the process.
Great, thank you all very much, thanks for your time.
Thanks, man.
All right, the administrator's report.
Yep, um, the Main Street drainage project, the, it's complete as of right now, they, they've completed the work. What they found as they were doing the work was some residential, um, sump pump, earlier drains and other, um, drains connected into the cat spaces, which, um, James, our IDW director, had enough to consult with John O'Connell relative to still more management issues. Um, and anything that was already existing could remain existing, according to him, but no new connections.
And that's...
I guess the EPA is back on some of the preliminary...
And this is rec, presidents that have hooked into the system on their own.
Mm-hmm, do you?
This is over years and years.
This is, this is, this is old, so they could identify which houses they were connected to. There was one issue, um, in one case, uh, one was tied directly into the main trunk, and it couldn't be reconnected by the DPW. So I wanted to request a vote of the Board of Selectmen to give permission for that property owner, um, to at his own expense be reconnected in. No new connections are able to be made, um, but according...
To stop they were?
Not according to James and John O'Connell.
The whole world that pumped their basement into it?
Yeah, I have serious stormwater concerns for me, because, you know, someone's basement gets flooded and their oil tank is leaking, that's a major violation on the town at that point.
Understood.
I don't see how this can be legal, and I'm kinda...
Well, stormwater should be monitored, you know, in case, you know, time to time to do that, yes.
That's why I asked the expert.
Yeah, I just...
Get something written from him, or whatever.
I'd like to see where the EPA guidelines are, if it's okay, because it really makes me uncomfortable.
Okay.
Now, the, the connections would be underground or above ground draining into a grate, is it surface, or?
I don't know the answer to that.
That might be another question, something else we have to clarify.
Okay, you want me to invite John and Jane to?
That, I think that'd be great.
That'd be a great idea, because I'm, I'm confused here, I, I thought that they were able to do that according to the discussion I had with John. I'd like to hear it from him, please.
Okay, I, my discussion with him, he also said they could reconnect back in, if they were existing, so...
Uh, do, we don't need a motion for that, do we?
No, no, I can invite him in for the next, um, the next meeting.
So, go back to this Main Street project for a second, um, the bridge?
Drainage.
Okay, but the Main Street bridge, that project is gonna be happening in the spring?
Yeah, it's gonna, we're going to rebid it around the first of November, in hopes of getting much more, um...
Right, favorable bid.
Favorable bids in line with what we had anticipated, um, so we'll rebid it in November for actions.
All right, and then, there's the, there's that gas pipe, the gas, there's a gas pipe that Verizon was supposed to be moving, and the, and I know some, and I know the gentleman that lives there, and he, he's concerned that the pipe is hanging, and that if something comes down the river and smashes into it, it could be, and he wants them to move it sooner. Have you taken, taken a look at that, Chuck?
I have, and it is a major concern, I agree with you, you know. I wanted it fixed the spring, this last spring, but, I think, it didn't happen, so...
But Verizon, can we make Verizon do it?
No.
Why not?
They own it, and they will move it when we get a plan for the bridge.
Oh, not Verizon, who is it, National, no, National Bridge?
It's National Bridge.
National Bridge.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Okay. So we can't make them move it?
No, they brought the wrong rig down to drill it, and I don't know why they haven't gone back.
Yeah, I think they've changed their mind since then, I think they're gonna temporarily move it out, fix the bridge, then move it back.
Oh.
That's, I think, is the plan now, it has changed three or four times since I got involved with it.
Okay.
So I don't know where the next plan is going to be.
Is that what we can do?
We can tell them that we're annoyed.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, they're threatening...
I can get the contact number for, um...
Can we send them a strongly worded email?
Tommy Fank, that is his name, from National Grid, was the contact person for that. James Heskey, he's been, we can get that.
I could, I can send them a strongly worded...
Well, the email with the plan, I thought I had sent that too, no?
Maybe we can ask if they expedite the process on the, on the line, for safety concerns.
Yeah, for safety concerns, that's all, I mean, I understand we're gonna put the bridge up, and then, I get all that, but, I mean, they're paying for this, it's not on our dime, and if it's not safe, then they should, they should not be, okay, it's not safe, but that's okay.
Actually, they wanted us to pay for...
They wanted us to pay for it, we won that battle, we're not paying for it.
Yeah, that was a, nothing go around.
So do you want to make a motion to send them a strongly worded letter asking them to expedite the process?
Of just that gas pump, yeah, pipe thing.
Okay, um, motion to send National Grid a letter asking them to expedite the temporary movement of the line. Second.
The unsafe pipe.
We don't know, I, if we don't, we don't...
I don't know if the engineers were concerned with that, but...
Okay, uh, discussion?
There is, there is a letter from, um, who's in charge of moving those kinds of pipes for the Commonwealth? Does a company that oversees moving of dangerous stuff?
I don't know, surely you're going over there.
They really can't be that dangerous, they shut, they shove it off and that didn't move it.
You know what I'm about? All right, I'll have to see if I can get...
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll see if I can get some background on that.
Yeah.
All right.
I had the, a proposal by the parking clerk requesting a discount for, um, parking permits, a one-dollar discount if you purchase by April first and purchase online.
Oh.
Do you have any concerns about that? We're trying to migrate a lot of our, our permitting processes online, so, um, it would be, the fee would be twenty-four dollars for the ticket versus twenty-five, and nineteen dollars versus twenty for seniors.
Um, the only concern, I had a number of residents say they couldn't get their parking permit in, uh, this building, and I said, that's not the case. It may have been a system was shut down, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, that's no problem.
And make sure that people who don't necessarily wanna use the internet or such will still be able to come to the town hall and get a parking permit.
They absolutely can get it at the town hall. It used to be a service provided in the town clerk's office, now it's upstairs, in the parking clerk's office.
In the parking clerk's office.
Yep, yep, they shouldn't have any problem getting a permit.
Do we have an estimate of a financial impact on this?
Um, what did we sell? I wanna say we sold around twenty-five thousand dollars worth of tickets, of parking permits this year. So it's two hundred, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, not, not, it's not too good, okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move...
Yeah, motion to approve parking clerk's change.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, the media committee and the Newbury Recreation Committee are two of our advisory boards that we don't have formal charges for. I know the media committee came out of the cable contract negotiation committee, and the Newbury Recreation Committee came out of the recreational, um, ball field construction committee, so they've kind of evolved, but we don't have real defined charges. I think both of them had talked about working on them at some point in time, so I did some research, and I was looking at, um, roles and responsibilities, so I'm gonna give you, I will forward that information to you and to the committees, so they can look at them. I've just pulled, you know, from various websites what other committees do, um, that's something else we might wanna do in the future, is list whether a committee is by statute advisory, you know, how, if it's temporary or permanent, we don't have a lot of definition in ours, so that's kind of a project that we're working on now, but those two probably, you know, in the next year or so, we should come up with more formalized, um, committees, because in the meantime, I have the, I have the signatory authority over both appropriations, but it's kind of loose, I know they've been approving some, um, some invoices, and I know Park and Rec has been approving some invoices, so we wanted to just tighten those two things up, it's just kind of a housekeeping thing. Um, the, I received notification yesterday of a grant award, we got another ten-thousand-dollar grant, um, as part of the backup legal community contract compacts. This is going to allow us to develop, um, a long-range financial forecasting model, so we can be projecting out, you know, more than just like the general three years that we look at, we can project out for a much longer period of time, and hopefully see any issues before they arise. So I'll be working with the Collins Center on that as well, they, they were the ones that helped us through the, um, financial goals and objectives, so...
Long, long-range vision can only help.
Yes, absolutely. Um, we got our free cash certified, we're notified that we have one million four-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars in our certification. It's down slightly from last year, last year we certified at one-point-nine, but, um, just as a...
Hey, for a while.
Just as a reminder, we spent over a million dollars in various projects this past year, so we had the, the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar fire sewer connection, we purchased the washers and dryers, and that was another thirty thousand, the Central Street Field House was two-hundred-thousand, we put two-hundred-and-sixty thousand from free cash into the Scotland Road project, paid for the leases on this building, one-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand for the leases. We also got the certification for our ambulance enterprise fund, their free cash was certified at seventy-eight thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, so it is indeed a self-supporting endeavor. Um, that's, we're only in our second really full year of operations, so to see, um, that kind of success is great news, and we are charging the indirect costs back against the ambulance, so the benefits of the ambulance employees, the accounting services provided by the town are being charged back, so that's, you know, that's really great that we were able to, to do that as well so quickly, so it's been very successful. So it's been very successful. The fire department is installing the mobile as well as the portable radios in all of the fire apparatus. That was the one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar grant, so that's actually ongoing right now. We've been having problems, I'm not sure if you are aware of it, with temperature regulation in the IT room. We've got all of our servers and everything in there. Air quality is very bad. It's very uncomfortable for the personnel who are working in there, full-time and part-time. So what we're going to propose doing is taking down the wall of this conference room. This room is always freezing cold, and it's got three air handlers in it. That one's, even with the air conditioning, is, you know, up around eighty degrees in, if they're working in. So we're going to take that wall down and see if we can get the air regulated in there.
So we're going to lose one conference room?
Yep, yep. We were gonna, in the initial proposal when we were renting this building, we were going to be renting the offices across the hall, but the tenants wouldn't leave. So we weren't able to secure that. It is available now, but the finance committee-
Doesn't make any sense.
Doesn't want to entertain that at this point. So we're going to take the wall down instead.
And it doesn't make more sense to do an air exchanger between the two rooms?
They've tried to do it. They've added, we've, we've spent the last year-
Butting, okay.
-pulling around with all of that, and it's just not working.
I mean, just losing the conference room is unfortunate.
It is, it is. The Board of Health and the Finance Committee are the two that typically hold their meetings in there, but they hold them on off times, so it shouldn't have too significant of an impact.
Ask her, read the narrative.
I know, I know, I know.
Almost like a selectman has an office.
I know. And you also need a surplus declaration of the two thousand eleven Crown Victoria sedan that was fully used by the fire department. We'll surplus that and-
All those in, oh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it?
Okay, I'm going to jump over the whole business to citizens' concerns.
Any citizens' concerns?
I have a little announcement. The Eastern Essex Veterans Association is going to hold on Sunday, October eighth, at twelve noon, a rededication of Plum Island Bridge to Sergeant Wilkinson. It's going to be very heavily attended. The Chaplain Dean Peterson's going to be there. Eastern Essex Veterans, Donnie is going to be there. And the, is it the Marine color card? Yeah, the Marine color card is going to be there, and various other groups on that. It has been fifty years since he has died. It's hard to believe, but, so that's, that's a big deal. We're going to be having that meeting, as I say, it's at noon time on this coming Sunday, so. Thank you for that.
Okay, whole business. Seeing none, correspondence. We have Trent District Communications Committee meeting scheduled, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
And the first meeting of that is, was scheduled Thursday, December?
I saw that, and I didn't think about it. First meeting's canceled.
It is, it is canceled, just so that you know that, because there were a number of people. We didn't hear back from Newbury, but a couple of people from the other two towns said that they couldn't make it. And quite honestly, we had said before when we were going to be meeting that we weren't going to meet just for the second meeting. In our, in our, at our October meeting, the superintendent will be presenting a preliminary budget, meaning talking about the drivers for next year's budget. So since he hasn't presented that to the school committee yet, we aren't going to talk about it on the fifth anyway, so first meeting will be in November.
So, I have a question. Do you want to know whether I'm coming or not, or if I don't, like, I was planning on going, but do you?
Yeah, if you can respond, well, we send out those emails just so that we have some feedback, because sometimes, you know, depending on the time of the year or when we have it, maybe we have to move the meeting. We're open to that as well.
All right, I'll respond to that. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Stephen. Thank you for your patience.
All right, we received a letter from FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, regarding flood insurance rate map revisions.
Again.
Again. So it looks like they've updated the element of moderate wave action, which if I interpreted this pile of information correctly, seems to be waves between one feet and three feet, and how they affect the structures and guidelines going forward. Does anyone else have any comments about it?
I did have a conversation with Sam Joslin, Building Commissioner, about it, and he basically wanted me to communicate to the board that the limo, as he called it, is newly identified on the map, and at this point in time, it has little or no change at all on my one.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my big concern, was after reading through all of those regulations-
Yeah, it was quite worrying.
And not being, yeah. They're very verbose.
Yeah.
How it would change things for our residents, and-
That was exactly my question, yeah.
Yeah, what does this mean?
There was a lot to digest there to get to with that.
Yeah.
Okay, and anyone who's interested in seeing more, the best link that I dug out of that, and this is going to be a little wordy,
And we are, I think it's two oh, no, twenty-five double zero ninety-nine, if I remember right?
I'm going to be impressed if you-
I know we're twenty-five double zero. I just can't remember. Where is it? Oh. You can find Newbury specifically to read about it.
When you're looking for that.
That's not it. Ninety-six, I missed by three. Twenty-five double zero ninety-six is our, our area in the maps.
Review of meeting minutes, and do we have more?
Motion to approve the minutes as written?
Second.
Well, I will go with you. I haven't had a chance to review these minutes, and they're long.
Just tell that to the woman who takes the whole one.
I know. There's a lot of them. Did everybody, did anybody else read this?
Yes.
I had them all.
Okay, so is it okay if I stay here?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve minutes?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have warrants tonight?
Motion to assign warrant?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any meeting updates? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.